I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Everyone please remain standing. I'd like to ask Father Clifton to come and give us a prayer, please.
Three prayers.
Don't encourage me.
I heard you got jipped last meeting, so... I was gonna make up for it, but, uh... Let us pray. O Lord, our governor, whose glory it is in all the world, we commend this, our beloved city of Inkster, to thy merciful care, that being guided by thy providence, we may dwell secure in thy peace. Grant to Byron, our mayor, to Sandra, Clarence, Connie, Timothy, Stephen, and Kim, our city council, and to all in authority, the wisdom and strength to know and do thy will. Fill them with the love of truth and righteousness, and make them ever mindful of their calling to serve this people of Inkster in thy faith and fear through Jesus Christ our Lord, who lives and reigns with thee in the Holy Spirit, one God, world without end. Amen.
Amen.
A second one, and this one is for... Our country's in such a crazy state of being right now. So for the people of this land, grant, oh God, that your holy and life-giving spirit may so move every human heart, especially the hearts of the people of this land, that barriers which divide us may crumble, suspicions disappear, and hatred cease. That our divisions being healed, we may live in justice and peace through Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen.
Nola, too. Father, did you get one? Alright. We get a roll call.
Mayor Nola.
Present.
Councilwoman Watley.
Present.
Councilman Oden.
Present.
Councilwoman Mitchell.
Present.
Councilwoman Howard.
Here.
Mayor Proton Williams.
Present.
And Councilman Chisholm.
Present.
We have seven present tonight, and we do have a forum.
Alright. Anyone have a chance to look at the gentleman? Anything you want to add? Take off? Alright, do we have a motion?
I motion to adjourn as is.
Board. You probably moved and supported, discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? It passes. Presentations, we have none. Anybody want to do a presentation? No presentations. We'll go on to consent agenda. Anyone look at the minutes from last meeting?
Yes.
Any corrections? deletions?
Councilman Chisholm sent me a correction to make, so it will be made.
Okay. You aren't sure? It's a secret?
It was a name. A name change.
Okay. Any other corrections? Okay, do we have a motion?
I move the approval of the agenda with a necessary correct... I mean, the minutes with a necessary correction.
Board. We probably move and support it, discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? It passes. So we are boards and commissions.
Stanley Johnson.
Shelby?
Shelby, yes, I'm sorry. Shelby Johnson.
Who is Stanley?
Okay, thank goodness, because that is a new name.
Do we have all the necessary documents?
Yeah, I think it was emailed out. Everybody look at it.
It was mailed out.
I think he's a reappointment. He was on already.
Parks and Rec.
I move the approval of Shelby Johnson for the Parks and Rec Recreation Commission.
Support. Okay, it's been properly moved and supported, discussion.
Did you see that resume?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And all she wanted is Parks and Rec? I thought she was gonna try out for the attorney's job or something. Try out for the attorney's job.
She's been out there for...
I'm messing with David. He's my new best friend.
She gave your job away. Okay, no other discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? It passes. Any other nominations? Boards and commissions?
Uh, Mr. Chair, uh, there was a... A gentleman who was on the Parks and Rec Commission, James Richardson. He said he sent it this information. We're having him to resend it again, so when he gets it in, it's in District 5.
In District 6.
6?
The 6?
Yep.
So Clinton...
It's the actress's husband, isn't it?
No, no, no.
The son.
Oh, the son.
Same name.
No, no, yeah, junior.
You have to use those seniors and juniors.
He's a junior.
Okay, so he's gonna send it in there?
Yeah, he sent it in. I don't know if he gave it to his parking inspector or sent it over. Uh, soon as we get that in.
Your friend wants to be appointed.
Are we looking at the quotas?
Then we met with...
For District 5. It's for District 5.
He used to work there. We met with...
He has a vacancy.
Members.
There should be a vacancy.
Already got...
Not with that.
Wait, I'm wrong.
She said, yeah, we were just working out the schedule.
Kind members, okay.
I did have another appointment for our planning commission, Ms. Kim Faison.
Okay. And we'll get her information. Did she file an application? We told her to stop and see the clerk, but she was here last week. Okay, but we'll get you out that information before next meeting. Okay. Any other nominations? Okay, alright, we'll move on. Onto new business.
Consider authorizing the director of DPS as a representative of the city to make an application to the Wayne County Department of Public Services for necessary annual permits to allow temporary closure of certain local and county roads for specified periods in accordance with all general and special conditions of this permit. As duly noted.
I move. Support.
Okay, who did what?
She moved that support.
She moved his word. Okay. We probably move and support it, discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? It passes.
Consider authorizing the director of DPS as a representative of the city to make an application to Wayne County Department of Public Services for necessary annual permit to occupy the right-of-way of Wayne County roads on behalf of the city of Inkster as duly noted.
I move.
Support. Okay.
I got it.
We probably move and support it, discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? It passes.
Consider authorizing the director of DPS as a representative of the city to make an application to the Wayne County Department of Public Services for necessary annual permit to occupy the right-of-way of county roads on behalf of the city of Inkster as duly noted. This is the right-of-way for, on behalf of the city of Inkster, for this permit.
Board. We probably move and support it, discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? It passes.
Consider authorizing administration to approve the contract with the United Resource LLC for the Saw Grant Condition Assessment Project. The bid amount from the low bidder is $639,601. Administration requests approval of the Saw Grant Award of $1,060,000, which was approved by DEQ for the whole total project.
Go move. Board. We probably move and support it, discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? It passes.
Council approval of the FY 2018 budget amendments for general fund, local streets, park and recreation, PEG, Tifa, miscellaneous grants, Justice Center debt, court building, and water and sewer funds.
I move.
Board. We probably move and support it, discussion.
I have one question. Park and Rec, um... Is that money from the millage or is it from the general fund?
Uh, that's from the millage.
Okay. I got a question, um... Look at, uh, under the general fund section of the document. Go down to the bottom, about middle ways, it says $29. Rexy?
Are you in...
On page 98.
Page 98.
Like summary of $29.
Uh, that is incorrect. Should be $29,000.
Okay.
Yes. That was lunch. Poor transparency. But that, uh, that should be $29,000, which ties to the, um, uh... Amount in the summary and everything. That's just an error.
Hey.
I have one question.
Yes.
Um, when I was looking at the, uh, total expenditures and the total revenue amendments, they are the same, so they just washed it out altogether.
Yes.
You've never seen that happen?
Yeah, so it's... I mean, again, we just, um, are trying, you know, we are... With this budget amendment, we're sticking with the initial, um, projection where, um, pretty much every dollar was, um... That was being proposed to be spent was also realistically expected to be collected in revenue, so, um... We're continuing with that approach, yeah.
Any other questions? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Passes. Call of participation. We have a whole bunch of them. Barbara Cooper.
It just means we doing a... Had a lot of...
Good evening.
Good evening.
For those who don't know me, I'm Barbara Cooper, and I am presently the new president of the Inkster Goodfellas. And I'm here just to thank the community and everyone for helping us with our paper drive on this past Friday. And anyone who still wants to donate to the Goodfellas, we are accepting donations. Especially want to thank our police officer, Lebo, and Lorenzo Mona. If anybody was on Inkster Road and Michigan Avenue, they put on a show. She put... No. She put on a show, amen, and we appreciate the funds that you brought to us, amen. Also, this Saturday, the Goodfellas will... We will be selling dinners, baked chicken dinners. Thank you, Mayor. Here we have his ticket. From 11 to 4 p.m. at the Doja Recreational Complex, and the donation is $10. We are trying to service as many kids in our community, so no child would be without a Christmas. And we need you. We need your help. And if anybody needs to get in contact with me, that's Barbara Cooper, 313-505-1140. Thank you.
Thank you. Officer Lebo.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
First of all, you're welcome. Now, you might not know, I have no qualms embarrassing myself for children. I was out there dancing up a storm, but we brought in a ton of money, and I'm so happy to do it. Next day I was sore. I was like, oh my God, maybe I'm getting old. But anyway, um, it has been a few council meetings since I've been here. I took a little trip to Florida, so it's nice to see everybody. But, um, just want to give a few announcements of what we got going on at the police department, a few exciting things coming up. In case you haven't noticed, a lot of our police officers are a little bit... A little more facial hair than you normally see. A little scruffier. They're actually allowed to wear beards. That is because they are... Have made a donation to support Inkster families. We're adopting several families this Christmas. And officers that wish to wear a beard through the months of, um, November and December donated $100, went towards the fund, and they don't... They have to waive their shaving permits. So, a little bit scruffier, but for a good cause. We are hoping to sponsor several families with a Shop With A Cop event that is going to be going on later on in the month. We're looking probably around the 20th. So we're really looking forward to that, hopefully outreach to a few communities, few families. Just looking forward to that. Next, we are in the process of putting together online reporting, so that way if there are certain crimes that are committed, you don't have to visit the station or have a cop come out, you can actually, uh, report it online. That way it kind of gets away the middleman, so that way you don't have to go be so inconvenienced when something happened to you. We are also putting together a gun safety public service announcement, myself and Troy. We should hopefully have that rolling out soon. So, just wanted to keep you updated. Have a nice holiday.
Same to you.
Excuse me, is there any video of you dancing?
I know for a fact some people took some videos, so I'm sure if you, if you, um, search YouTube enough, I'd be there. Because there is a few people that they're like going like this, and I totally played with it, pointing at them like, I see you.
Okay, thank you. Alright, Madam Clerk.
I hope everyone is excited for the next city council meeting. We'll be kicking off See Click Fix. We're gonna be having a pep rally, so please make sure you're here. Tell somebody to tell somebody to tell somebody to be at this city council meeting. You don't want to miss it. Thank you.
Oh, do we want... It's up to us? Yeah, we have a lot of calls, because people are still breaking leaves and putting out compost. I think the deadline was last week. Of course, I'm one of those people, I'll be clear. I called. So we are... Do you want to extend it?
We can add it. We can add another week. We talked to the, um, public about adding another week.
We're gonna extend it through this Friday.
It'll need to be next week.
Next week, okay. Starting next week.
December 11.
December 11th to that Friday. You can put your compost out so it can be picked up, so I can put mine out, too.
Leaves, last grass cut, everything.
Everything, okay. Alright, Mr. Trezor.
Just one thing, the tax bills, the winter tax bills have been mailed, um, so give the, uh... Couple days if you haven't received it. Um, information is always available online. But they, uh, we are now collecting the winter taxes. They're payable through February 15th without any penalty and interest, and we can collect them to the end of February.
It's always great news around Christmas time. Okay, Mayor, Council, where should we go? Councilwoman out.
Um, I was just like to, um... I talked to Don, the code enforcement, and she took care of some stuff for me that was lingering. But I just have to say that I know that we have really a lot of people who are offender stuff that's going on in the city of Inkster as far as code violation. And I'm not sure what the process is, but I don't think they mind getting ticketed. Because it keeps reoccurring and reoccurring. So, you know, hopefully, you know, we can...
Lock them up.
I don't know. I didn't say lock them up, but I'm gonna say whatever the proceed... You know, we need to get a stop on that, because that's kind of getting embarrassing. I mean, because you still see it, and you know the code enforcement is working hard, going back and forth, back and forth, where they can be going out doing new things. They be tracking, and it's still the same offenders, so, you know, maybe we're looking to that chief. That's all I have.
Alright, thank you. Councilwoman Wiley.
I don't really have anything, but I wanted to respond to her, why we're doing the new code things, which escalate penalties for each incident that happens right up to bail time. And we're working with the court. We have been working with the court, where the judge has said she will implement if we bring her the proper documentation. So that's one of the reasons ordinances are being revamped, give the ordinance officer for more authority in the job that they're doing. So these people, they can keep doing if they want to. Won't be for me, or the city.
Well, no dog is loose.
I'll address it in my comments. Um, Councilman Chisholm? Nothing. What? There's no pass, either. Alright. Councilman O... Pass.
It's fun all night.
We're already breaking a record, alright? Councilwoman Mitchell.
I just want to say thank you to Mr. Bivins and his department. I happened to be out one night, and I realized that we had different lights. And there's one right in front of my house, and I said, when did they do that? So it really makes a difference, and there are still some yellow, some other old lights up. But, and you can tell the difference. It's really, uh, a wonderful addition to the safety of the city, so thank you very much for spearheading that and getting the job done.
That's all?
Well, uh, if you want me to continue, no, I have nothing else.
Mayor Proton?
Thank you. Just got a one complaint on, on, um, East Street where, as usual, they're dumping trash over there. Again, you know, over where East High... Where East High School used to be at. It said people, East High School, on beach, people stay turning that corner there and still throwing their trash out, so, um... Maybe a good idea to... I don't know if we want to put a camera over there or put a phone card over there.
Why don't you tell them all? Tell everybody. Just put it on TV.
I have no shame, I'll tell it.
You should have passed, too.
On the other hand, I'd like to thank the committee that did the unity and community meeting last week. That was very informative. I hope that more organizations get involved, because we definitely need to not have too many events going on same day at the same time, or we're reinventing the wheel. So, um, I really enjoyed that meeting, and I hope there's more to come.
Thank you, will be. We're working on it.
And last but not least...
Shop Inkster.
Well, since y'all already done, this is me saying it, now it is.
You keep going, Timmy.
Patronize.
We should all say it all together.
Inkster, because we do... They do need to have the tax dollars so they can pay these taxes to us.
Right.
Patronize.
Now, some of y'all might say there's no businesses out there, but we got two restaurants out there, uh, that I go to. Uh, we have a plethora of gas stations. We got two drugstores.
Don't forget the liquor store. Party stores.
And you can get a discount if you use your I can.
Yeah. So, we do have businesses. They might not be of your choice, but they're out there. We've got a grocery store, too.
We do.
Oh, it might... It's saying that, when I went on the, uh, the conference, uh, a couple weeks ago, it says, you know, in the south, they have... They don't have grocery stores either in their neighborhood. They had to go like several miles out to get to a grocery store. Some of them suggest that, well, maybe if you deliver a store, and not a Kroger, but a regular, smaller store, you can suggest to them what kind of products you want to see in that store, and maybe they're... Couple of boys says, okay, well, if that's what you want, they will supply what you need. Because we've been, I know since then, they've been saying they want a Kroger for years. We're not gonna get Kroger. Okay, so we have, we have that store in Cherry Hill.
Spark. Spark.
Why we not gonna get Kroger?
Uh, maybe we go talk to Food Bank and says, here's the products we'd like to see, name brand or this, this, this. And if they were accommodating, uh, then you can start shopping there. Because that, right now, that's gonna be our grocery store.
Let's put Connie Mitchell in charge of that. She has nothing. Alright, Commissioner Addison, I got some bad news. The meeting's almost over. But since you're late.
Thank you very much, and I apologize for being late, but I just came from another council meeting. I was trying to do double duty tonight, and you guys are very efficient, eh? And you'd think this was the last meeting before Christmas.
We're acting like it.
So I'll not... Try not to delay that any. I just really wanted to come up and, uh, say greetings to everyone. Christmas greetings, and, uh, I'm not Santa Claus, but, but I did want to say thank you for all of your hard work and for cooperation with me, and I appreciate it very much, and people keeping me informed of things that need attention, and I'll try my best to do that in the new year, as I have already. And, uh, one of the nice things I wanted to mention is the chief. I had talked to him today, and it sounds like we've seen an improvement in the safety at Cherry Hill and Inkster Road. And I've noticed when I've gone through there myself, that it's a lot more efficient flow of traffic. It looks like it'll be a nice improvement, and I appreciate the council's support, the mayor and the chief in getting that done with Wayne County. And we did get an estimate on the sidewalk. I told Mr. Bivins today that we got an estimate, it's a pretty high estimate, to do the sidewalk along Inkster Road on the west side, uh, next to the park. But it'll be one of the projects I'll be working on next year, try to get that done. So it, uh, we'll talk about it more, but I'm gonna try to, uh, try to see that happen, because there's a lot of seniors and people that live in the towers there that really need a sidewalk there. It's impassable at times when it's muddy, and when it freezes and gets ruts in even the dirt that's there. And people shouldn't have to try to go down a place that there's no sidewalk. So, like I said, that'll be a priority for me next year. But anyway, thank you all, and Merry Christmas again to all of you, and Happy New Year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You can start to have one more.
Sure.
Last week, there was a meeting at the complex with the FAA, and they didn't deal with the air, the airplane noise. They had... You were talking about something else, but I walked in anyway to the chat and see what was going on. And, uh, of course, I raised a concern about the, about the noise, or the planes flying over back and forth. Now, they do have a, uh, a website where you can go and complain. Just go on Google and put in DTW airport noise, and you can write a complaint to them about the noises. The airplane flying over your house day and night, like they fly over my house day and night. And hopefully we can get a response for it, and I'm gonna be monitoring that, because like I said, they fly directly over my house in the morning and night.
That complaint, does that go directly to the FAA or to the airport?
Uh, it goes to Wayne County, uh, Wayne County Authority.
Is that it?
It's it.
Okay. Alright, um, real quick, the dogs, we were aware, we may have more dogs than we have people in the city. We're now trying to open up our own dog pound right down the street, so we're getting that building ready, and then we're looking into probably next year's budget, or maybe even this year's, to hire a dog catcher. Uh, because right now we have police officers chasing dogs, trying to catch them, which is not efficient. We would rather than be doing something else. But we do realize we have a serious problem with a lot of stray dogs and vicious dogs, so we're working on the ordinance also. I think that's done.
Yeah, it's done, and it's been reviewed by the attorney, and we'll be writing up the information to ship it to the paper.
Okay.
So the citizens can read it in the next two weeks.
Okay.
Then it'll come for first and second reading.
So look for that in the telegram. It'll be a new dog ordinance. So we're trying to tighten up our ordinance so we can get these dogs off the streets, so that'll be coming. We'll have a public hearing, where everybody's welcome to come talk, and then we'll vote on it probably sometime in January. The council will vote to change the ordinance, so we are working on that problem. Unity in the community, it was a great event. Want to thank Jerome for getting the Christmas decorations up. I think some of those decorations are older than I am. So we're going, the next budget amendment, we might, after Christmas, we'll try to find a discount decoration for next year. Because some of them will turn colors, I think. But at least they're up. At least they're up.
Can I ask a question on that? What's, what's wrong with the other side? Is that electrical? Didn't you tell me something about?
To get electricity over there.
Why do we have to repair it? Isn't that a county road? I mean, the, um, burn?
The medium?
On a county road?
Oh, oh, yeah, okay.
I mean, a state road.
Did they put the trees down there on, on a middle belt for Ms., uh...
Ms. Gardner, she's not in town. You know, she'll be back.
Oh, I hope her tree is there.
There's decorations up, though. There's decorations.
Yeah, and City Hall's pretty...
We had a great Christmas party today, senior Christmas party at the rec center. Want to recognize Ms. Patterson back there, who made the food. It was all good. And for those who haven't visited, Zaman, which is two doors down from here, City Hall, just had their, call it a bread cut for their new commercial kitchen, uh, which is a great idea. They built a commercial kitchen in their facility and seating area for 50 people, and her mission is to make sure that the hungry in the city get fed, and the people who need, and that is, that's just absolutely great.
Yeah.
Also, they have three chefs working in there. You can rent the place, if you need a meeting place, you can rent the chef, rent the kitchen, and have your event there. And that's a way for them to raise revenue to feed more people who need, so that is something great. Sister Bozi runs the nonprofit over there, so go in there and check it out, and take a look. You'll be amazed at what they did in there. And of course, they have things for any other people, for other folks in the community, furniture, food, they have a food pantry. They have everything in there, clothes, so definitely go check it out. It's definitely an asset to our community. And that is all. We'll see you the couple weeks next meeting, that's right before Christmas. We have a lot of Christmas gifts flying around here, giveaways, so you probably want to come, because you may get something at that meeting. You want to be here, and everybody's gonna be happy, because it's almost Christmas, so we'll see you on the A team.
Motion for adjournment.
So move.
Probably most important and everything. Uh, discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We broke a record. Thirty-five minutes, right?
He's doing that.